Record on this computer. There we go.
Thank you.
No, no problem, no problem. And, and like I said, this is going to be tonight, when we're gonna do this class, and then on tomorrow night, we'll do the same class again. For those that hear about it too late, and they wanna join in, and then maybe once a week or twice a week, we'll come together with new lessons. And um, we'll do it, I, I will, I will host them as long as um, we have participants, as long as it's necessary.
Okay.
Keep that in mind. I'm gonna start by raising the arc.
Play in already.
No, we have not played in yet. I'm going to start by raising the arc. Let's do it like this, I'm going to go to um, the internet to读the Bible, so we can see the raising of the arc. Hopefully, everybody can see my screen.
Could, could you tell me, is that the kuma?
Yes, ma'am.
And that was? Isaiah?
Chapter ten, verse thirty-two, I believe. Thirty-five, there you go. And, and what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna copy it from here, and I'm going to uh, I'm going to stick it right in our class, right here. So you guys will have a copy of it in the class.
Okay.
Give me one second, insert, I'm gonna insert a page break, and I'm gonna put it right here. Base without formatting, alright, I'm uh, um, give me one more second, and then we're gonna blow it up to one hundred percent, alright. So, this is the raising of the arc. Um, Nalagish takavoh, please, on the spirits. Kuma yahua. Ve yafusu o iveka. Ve yanusu mi sanecha mi panecha. Let's do that one more time, I wanna, I'm gonna highlight it so you guys can see it. Okay, so here we have.
Is it on the screen?
Is it, am I sure, can I see my screen?
Yes, I can. I'm not seeing it.
You're not seeing it?
Yes, I see it.
You see it, okay, um, so do, if you're not seeing it, maybe you are, are you on your phone or you're on a computer?
Phone.
Your phone? You're on your phone too, Israel?
Israel, it's on the phone too.
I am gonna try to switch over to the computer, so I'm gonna remove my voice, but I'll be listening to you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just switched to the computer, but when I was on my phone, I could still see it.
Okay. As we get through this class, look, we're gonna have to help each other troubleshoot, because I'm, I'm by far no expert, I have so many programs on this computer that you can hardly learn half of them when you, when you're doing it. So, um, but here we go again, so I'm gonna highlight some of this. I'm gonna highlight some of this as we're going, so you guys can see the, the syllable breaks, okay?
Okay.
We have kuma yahua. And yahua, this here, I'm gonna put it in blue, this is going to be one of our sight words, you're gonna have to recognize this word, this word on sight, so you'll be, you'll be saying this word throughout your, your life as an Hebrew, so you might as well commit it to memory. So we have kuma yahua. Then we have here, ve. I'm gonna put that in a different color, let's put that in orange, ve. Ya. Fu. Su. This, yes, this here is zu. They are fuzu. Then we have o i veka.
O i veka.
O i ve ka. Ka, o iveka, ve yafusu o iveka. Then we have again, that ve. Ve ya nu su. So you can start seeing a pattern here, this pattern of blue is the u, right, zu and su. Zu and su. They are fuzu o iveka, they are nu su. Mi sa ne ka. Mi soneka. And you might, serious might say, mi sa ne i ka, right, mi soneka. Mi paneka. Let's do it one more time. Kuma. Ve yafusu. Yes, ma'am, they are fuzu. Then we have here, o. Now, the reason why this is o, I'm gonna highlight it for you in purple, the reason why this is o is because of this little dot floating at the top. Okay, because you remember, they say aleph is silence.
Right.
So, this dot here at the top is like the, it's, it's called the kolam. And uh, you might see that spelled like C H O L A M. And, and what it, what it represents is the sound of the letter o. So, if the aleph here, this purple aleph, is silent, then the kolam gives it the sound o, and that's why you have o ve. Yes, ma'am, o iveka. Ve yanusu mi sanecha mi panecha. But I, I guarantee you, I know this might seem like what I was doing, right, but we're going to slow it down in the next couple of slides. We're gonna slow it down, and I'm going to teach you how to transliterate it, so that you can start sounding things out for yourself. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know any of this, I'm, I'm, I'm new, just I went out running the alphabets and everything, so this right here is kinda Greek to me, I'm trying to get it.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, it's, it's Greek, yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
Hebrew though.
It is, yeah, it's Hebrew, but it's Greek. Alright, I, I wanna make sure everybody can still see my screen.
Can.
Okay, now, I'm going to go to um, I'm looking for it right now, okay, here we go, so I'm gonna go to this file here, you guys don't have this file, but I will make sure you guys get it, okay, this is from this is from my book that I'm working on, I'm writing, writing my own book on learning Hebrew, okay? So, this is uh, the Hebrew alphabet, and I know it's, I know it's mistaken to say aleph there, but let's, let's put all those requirements out of the window, alright, let's, let's talk about this from the standpoint of American English speakers, alright?
Okay.
The, the Hebrew alphabet, uh, the, the, the scientific term for alphabet is, it's called orthography. O R T H O G, orthography, right, so let's talk about letters that look alike. Because in Hebrew, some letters look alike, and if you don't, if you don't get them, if you're not familiar with them, they will catch you up every time, alright? So it says here, in general, how words and letters might appear to the reader of Hebrew really depends on the font that you are writing in, some fonts are better than other fonts, fonts could be like Arial or Gothic, or Times New Roman, or Sendana, you know, there's different fonts for writing Hebrew. You go to Israel, and all those billboards and, and ads and things would be in all kind of different fonts, and you think learning English fonts is hard, try reading Hebrew in a thousand different fonts, it gets very difficult. So, for, for my class, I try my hardest to make everything in Times New Roman, because that gives you the, the ornate or the calligraphic uh, representation of Hebrew that we know, that you see in the Bible, is usually in that calligraphic uh, Times New Roman font, okay? Now, so, so here, here are some of the words, here are some of the letters that look alike. Alright, and what I'm saying was, depending on the font you put it in, other letters might try to blend sometimes soon, so we try to use a clean font, so, we have here the gimel and the noon look alike. The gimel and the noon, the gimel has that extra foot on it. Alright? The good thing about Hebrew letters is, generally, the first letter of the name of the letter is the sounded mase, so the gimel makes the G sound, and the noon makes the N sound. Now look here, we have the vav over on the far left, in the middle we have the zayin, and on the far right, we have the noon sofite, sofite means the final noon. Whenever the noon is written in a word, and it appears as the last letter of that word, it's gonna have an extra tail. And this tail falls below the line, it's like an invisible line, and like we're writing on lined paper, that line is called a staff, S, S T A F F, so there are several letters who have a tail that falls below the staff. And I think there's only one letter that has a tail that rises above the top staff, does anybody know what letter that is?
The lama.
Lama, correct, lama has a little arm that goes way above the staff. Alright. I'm on line three of this now, line three, you see the bate and the cass. The bates and the calf, and that could also be a vates, okay, it could also be a vates. Um, how do you tell when it's a bait or a vates, and there is no nicu? You can't, unless you know Hebrew, sorry. Hebrew speakers in Israel, they learn with the nicu until fifth grade, in most cases. So, they read from elementary to going into middle school using the nicu, because you can't tell what the, what the sound of a word makes without it, and so if they struggle into fifth grade, you know, we're struggling. Alright, line number four here, we have, on the far left, we have the hay, and we have, in the middle, we have the pets. You gotta scratch your throat, it comes out of your nose. There you go, and then we have the ta, sometimes you'll say tav, the V or the U, uh, more toward the Greek, you'll see ta, but in toward the, you know, Hebrew, they might say tav with a V. Um, line number five here, we have the calf again, and we have the pay. The pay has this little I that hangs down in the middle of the, the vowel, the letter. So the calf and the pay might look alike. Here we have, line, um, this line here, we have the mem sofites, does anybody remember what sofites means?
The final.
Whenever mem appears as the last letter of a word, it always has this boxy shape. And then we have the samea, or the samech, I'm sorry, the samech. Samech and mem sofites, they look alike. So when you see this at the end of a letter, at the end of a word, you gotta look real co, real careful. The mem will be more cornery and boxy, whereas the cement will be more round and circular. The second to last line here, we have the dalit, what sound does dalit make? How do we know it makes a D?
Because it sounds, it's dalit.
It's dalit, right, that's the, that's the trick, right, anytime you read a letter, the first letter of the spelling of the letter is generally the sounded mix, so dalis. And then we have the calf sofites, somebody tell me about the calf sofite, what do you notice? Yes, ma'am, the staff, it, it drops below the staff.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and you, there's no need to memorize what a staff is, I'm just telling you that, because it's the incessant English teacher in me, okay? And then we have the reish.
Yes.
Reish, we will be, we would have a tendency to say resh, resh. But I want you to squeeze a little Y between that E and A, the E and S, is reish. Like a stingray, reish, there you go, reish. And then, of course, look at this here, the last line, the iron on the left side, which makes no sound, and the zadi, which makes the Z sound, now, everybody's saying zadi.
Zadi.
So the zadi is not a Z, it is a TS. Try to, try to, try to imagine that in your brain, the TS sound. So, so the, the zadi is not a strong Z, like zzz, it's more like a, a soft Z, where your tongue is not stopping the air so much, right? There you go, and a, a good word for zadi is zion. The zion is with the, with the zadi, okay? I think that's all for this, um, now, if you guys, ladies, most ladies here, I'll say ladies, if you ladies have your phone with you, um, I will leave it here for a second, so you ladies can take a picture of that, if you want a picture of it on your phone. If not, I also have the recording.
Toda, and we'll receive that when?
We'll put it in the WhatsApp group.
Toda.
Okay, the WhatsApp group. Alright, let's move on really quickly to the next, the next thing here, let's see what this says. Still from my book, this is not, nothing that uh, Saraw Samaki will have. Um, Hebrew phonography, phonography means things that sound alike, letters that sound alike. Some Hebrew letters actually have similar sounds, and just as with the orthography or the way you write them, the letter phonemes can be very ambiguous, confusing, and it differentiates, I mean, i- it's just, it gets more and more muddy, okay, so we're gonna do our best to try and clear it all up. But if you're not confused, you're not doing it right, okay? Alright. Some definitions here, a phoneme is the smallest utterance of sound. For instance, if you have the word cat, the le, the word cat has three phonemes. Ah, and cats, so the smallest phoneme in the word cats is and ah, and it's, right, there's three phonemes in that one word. Similar, similarly, the word phrase also has only three phonemes. As, I'm sorry, phase, as, as, phase, only three phonemes. So, cat has three phonemes and three words, but phase also has three phonemes, even though it's five words, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, five letters, five letters. Does everybody understand that?
Can. Yes.
Can, can.
You don't have any, if you have a question, stop me, okay, I'm gonna make sure we know this. So, when we're looking at Hebrew, all of those symbols and dots and, and other things you see in the Hebrew, each one of those marks represents a phoneme.
Okay.
Okay, all of those things above the letters and below the letters and inside the letters, it all represents different phonemes that you have to be able to read, and when you start decoding what those phonemes are trying to tell you, when you start decoding the information that those diacritical marks are telling you, that is called decoding, and that is how you read Hebrew. So when you, when you're able to do that, now you're reading Hebrew. So let's look at this first line. This first line here, going from the English left to right, both of these are going from left to right. All of Hebrew is right from left, we know, I'm going from left to right, here we have the sheen. When that dot, who cares what it's called, when that dot is on the right side of the letter, it, it is telling you, this makes an SH sound, that sheen is represented by your two front teeth. Okay? The second letter here is samech, and it makes a soft S sound. Then we have the zayin. Zayin has this little hat on it, they call that a hat, and it makes a Z sound, right?
Right.
And then we have the scene, which makes a soft S sound. Alright, whenever that dot is on the left side of the shin, it makes the S sound, like scene. We could also include zadi in this group if we wanted to. Sheen, samech, zayin, scene, and zadi, all of those make the S sound. Alright, the second line here, we have the tet and the ta. And I told you, the ta can be tav, or it can be tav with a V at the end, depending on who's teaching the class, alright?
Alright.
I tend to use the, the TAU, because the Hebrew alphabet is actually the Phoenician alphabet, because the Hebrews do not have their own alphabet, they use the Phoenician alphabet, and the Greeks also use the Phoenician alphabet, and that's why we have ta in the Greeks, because their alphabet is taken from the same source as the Hebrew alphabet. So I tend to go with ta. Um, now, we have line three, we have the vav, and we have the vates or the bates. Now, if, if there's a dot in there, it's gonna be a bait, the dot will go right here in the mouth of the bait. If there is no dots, you can assume it's vates. Now, that can be confusing, because the problem is, what if you see a dot sometimes, and you don't see a dot sometimes? Is it the bait or is it the vate? The good news is this, if you're reading a Hebrew text, and they are using the nicu, they will use the nicu all the time, they're never gonna use it half of the time. You can't decide, I don't like kolam or shiddi, so I'm not gonna use them, but I am gonna use a shiva and a holam vav. You have to use them all, if you're gonna use them all at all. So, you might not see any nicu on the text, and then you gotta guess. But if you do use a nicu, they're gonna use it comprehensively, and you don't have to guess whether it's the bait or the zade. Alright. Uh, two more lines here, we have the kof, now, who, who knows how it's pronounced, who cares, it, it's like a Q or K. Kof, we have the pets, and we have the calf. And, and sometimes a calf can be considered a guttural as well, sometimes a calf can scratch your throat, especially when it's the last letter of a word, what is the last calf called again?
Sofite.
Calf sofite, exactly, alright, and then we have zadi and zayin again, making that Z sound, okay? I'm gonna leave it there for a few seconds, if you wanna take a picture of it, you can, I'll also put this worksheet in the uh, I'll put this worksheet in the group chat. Alright. Let me see if I want to go one more worksheet here, before we get to the uh, let's see, let's see what this is. Final letters, oh, we gotta do this one. Alright, calf, now, noon, feh, and zadi sofites. Some Hebrew letters actually have similar sounds, and just like, okay, I did not change the, uh, we'll, we'll skip that part. Remember, this book is still a work in progress. The, uh, I'm a human being, I'm, I make mistakes. I have to go back and change that, so it makes sense, uh, for this here, but these are the final characters, calf and calf sofites, mem and mem sofite, noon and noon sofites, pay and feh sofites. And then we have zadi and zadi sofites. Whenever, there, there is never going to be a pay sofites, it is always changing to the F sofite, like the feh. You can have a, you can have an F sound in the beginning, but you would never have a P sound at the end. Okay? The word for nose in Hebrew is af. It's aleph and feh sofites, okay, af. There's never gonna be like a P sound at the end, it always goes to the F sound, or a soft P, alright? I'm gonna leave that there for a few seconds, you wanna take a screenshot or stop a picture of it, go right ahead, and then we're gonna go to our actual um, thingamajiggy here that I have worked on for you, and uh, this was, this will be, generally will be how the class will look for the most part. Let's see, if I close this out, it'll move everything over. Let me see if I close that out, here we go right here, alright, this is what I wanted, alright. This is the diva side, the, the raising of the arc again, we're gonna go, go past that, and we're gonna go into Hebrew for Beginners Class, a supplemental tutoring for drill and practice, okay? Isn't this, remember, this is just supplemental to what, what Saraw Samaki is doing, alright? I'm not trying to take her class, um, she probably can run circles around me in Hebrew, alright? Um, but I, I'm just doing this because, like you said, sometimes she goes really fast, and if you don't have an understanding, you just don't get one, because her class is very intense, okay? Disclaimer, Saraw has a unique approach to how she teaches, and her expectations are not the same as mine. I submit to her expertise and only hope to enhance the class's foundational modality by tutoring the alphabet and the nicu. The key word here is modality, right, modality just means a particular mode in which something exists or is experienced or expressed, so we're just trying to help you guys get a better foundational understanding, so that way, when you go to class, you're not totally in the dark.
Toda.
This class is an unauthorized supplement to Saraw Samaki's class. If y'all go back and tell her that I'm doing this class, and she gives you two or three choice of words from me, I told you, I, she has not authorized me to give this class, okay, I'm just, I'm just getting in where I fit in. I'm just, I'm just getting in where I fit in. This class is designed to give a foundation in Hebrew reading, phonetics, and the diacritics and the letters, okay? It's just a foundation. About the teacher. My name is Yochanan Bin Malak, I've been in the truth and this movement for twenty years. Or more, I think like twenty-one years now, I've been in part of the Kingdom since two thousand and fourteen. I have a bachelor's degree in professional writing, I'm a school teacher with Houston Independent School District. My title is multilingual educator, and I am an emergent bilingual coach. I am the teacher that helps other teachers. Harness or differentiate their curriculum to students that don't speak English. So I deal with language and language acquisition on a daily basis. And I also am an instructional design and curriculum advisor, I, I design curriculums for multilingual students. So this is not something I do for fun, this is my profession. Uh, I've been teaching Hebrew for four years, I have designed my own approach, you guys saw a little bit of my book. And I design my own worksheets and PowerPoints, and they are available to you all if you want to use my, uh. My, my material. Okay, uh, a few class norms, not everything you see during this session will be actual Hebrew words. Some of the things are just designed as learning tools. Sarah or some other native speaker might have a differing opinion about some of the ground rules and class norms we establish. All of my rules can be bent, most of my rules can probably be broken. But as a foundation, you know, when, when you, when you start elementary school, they tell you, uh, subtract. Ten through seven, they tell you, you gotta put the ten over the seven, cause you can't put the ten under the seven. And we know that you can take ten from seven, but until you understand positive numbers, you can't. Negative numbers.
Hey, that's my area right there.
Some rules can be bent, other rules can be broken, but we established these rules so that we can get a foundation. And as always, we will use the niku for everything but sight words. We will use the niku comprehensively, because I don't wanna confuse anybody. When we do the sight words, that is the only time you guys will have, uh, to memorize the words. And it is memorization, they're sight words, it's memorization. My little girl is in, in pre-K, and her sight words are cat, bat, rat, dog, you know, she gotta memorize those things.
Yes, yeah.
Lesson one, any questions so far? Am I going too fast, anybody need some water?
No, this is great, good.
Lesson number one, learning valve and commas. So we're gonna learn how to use. The valve and how to use the commas, is this too much to write in the title? But it's really how to use the valve and commas. Alright. I want you all to take a picture of this with your phones if you need to. This, you can write it down on a sheet of paper. You let me know how much time you need to write this down. This is, um, our transliteration key, this key is going to help us throughout the rest of the class. While you are writing it down, I want you to notice that. I use the new, the niku on the letters where the niku is required. Like in the first column, the baits, there's a dot in the mouth of the baits. On the first column to bottom, you have the scene with the dot over the left shoulder. On the top of the last corner, I mean, the left top corner, right corner. You have the sheen with the dot over the right shoulder. And then. At the bottom, you have two. Um, two things that are highlighted in blue. The reason why those two are highlighted in blue is because in this instance. As we're going through the lesson, these are not consonants, these are going to be vowels. So from this point moving forward, anytime you see a valve or this little I symbol. Those are your vowels, everything else is a consonant.
Kane, do you have a mouse or a pointer where you can point, thank you.
Can you see it right now?
Kane, I can see it now, but when you were speaking, I didn't see it moving.
Okay, I would, I'd better, I'd do better, let me, let me know what you need. So here, we have the baits, I've highlighted it, let's make it, uh, let's make it blue. The baits there, there is a niku with a dot in the mouth. Then you have the. Samech, I'm sorry, the scene, the scene is also gonna be blue. It has a dot over the left shoulder. The sheen, I'm making it blue, it has a dot over the right shoulder. And then, of course, the two in the blue box are also vowels and not consonants. Okay? Does anybody need any more time to copy those down?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going here. Alright, rule number one. And like I say, as we're going, you can take a picture of this, it, it'll be, it's being recorded, but you also take a picture of my. Rule number one, whenever you see the valve. Between two letters. There's a question.
Between two consonants.
Between two consonants, you, when we say consonants, we say letters, okay? Between two consonants, consonants. Whenever you see the valve. Between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. And no, that is not always true, but for lesson number one, day number one, this is the truth that we're gonna go with, okay? Knowing this will, knowing this will help you decode. This word. Right here. Does anybody wanna take their chances decoding this word? Y'all are reading Hebrew. Y'all are reading Hebrew. So, we know. Let me, uh, make this better, so what we know is this, that is the sheen. This here is the O. And this here is also sheen, so that word is shosh. And this was a, this is a slang word that became a term of endearment, right, during the day of the sword of strength. And so now you might hear a lot of people calling each other shosh. And of course, Texas jurisdiction were extra, so for the girls, we say shoshai sometimes, but, uh. You have to ask somebody with more knowledge than me where the word actually comes from. Alright, so let's practice, I've done the first one for you. Let's see, no, no, don't bring anything out, nobody brought anything out, let's see, um. Debra.
Yes.
Can you do, can you do this, this one here for me?
The second one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, dalit.
Dalit?
Uh huh. The wow, oh, H.
Uh huh.
And the dalit.
Is that a dalit?
Oh no, that's a race, take it back, that's a race.
Some, some letters look alike, right?
They did, that looked alike.
They look very much alike, the difference is that the dalit is. Got a little extra curve on it, in that race.
Yes.
You know?
So that's door.
Door, yes, and know that it's not actually Hebrew word, but it's just. Practice, it's good practice. Let's see, mal, malakia.
Kane, I need post.
Kane, can you do this one here for me?
That is. Low.
Spell it out for me.
Lament wild gimme.
Lament.
Uh huh, wild gimme.
It's not a wild.
Make the sound.
There you go, oh, and then we had. That's okay, that's okay. Yes, ma'am, lament or gimme, there you go, low. I just wanna make sure we, we, we just keep it, uh, keep that norm going for, for today, so that we know that this is a, a vowel. Now, sometimes you'll see a word like. Um, you guys know the, uh. Acts, chapter four, verse twelve, where he goes, uh, no other name, none of the heavens is given to the son of man, whereas he must be saved. This is a. That word, never sure, you will see two vowels together. One vowel is the O, and the second vowel is the vowel, so you have to. There are instances where the vowel makes both. The O and the V sound, but for the purpose of this class today. Every time you see the vowel, it's gonna be the O, uh, which is, um, the holam, and we're gonna talk about that in a little bit. Alright, um, Nala, Jerry.
Kane.
Otie, let's, uh, can we get you to do this next one here?
Mem, oh.
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 Yes, ma'am. And noon. Now, notice that I did not put the noon Sophie, I did not wanna confuse anybody, but you would normally have the noon Sophie right there, okay? And the, the last one, um, let's do it all together silently while I do it aloud. Um, I'll give you that five seconds to put it in your head what the first letter is.
Same.
Same, there you go. Uh, then we have the O, of course, and then we have the race. Now, I want you to notice something else before we move on. Whenever. I am transliterating Hebrew, and I'm nobody, I'm just Yochanan. I ain't no man, I ain't no brother on the move, I ain't no matter valor, I can't even, uh, my teddits won't get it, okay? Whenever I am translating. If I am translating a consonant, the consonant is always capital. And the vowel is always lowercase. Let's, let me show you, the sheen, whenever I do sheen, sheen has the capital S and the lowercase h. But everything else is usually capital unless it is a niku, the niku is always lowercase. That just helps me keep things, um, in order for myself. How you do it is on you, but that's how I do it.
You, uh, bring that back down so I can take a picture of all of it.
Okay, let me, uh, I can zoom out a little bit, so it'll fit in, uh. Let's go a little bit more, so it'll fit in, uh, there you go. Alright, I'm gonna zoom back out to a hundred percent. And we're gonna move on to the next thing, okay? Rule number two. The commas, which I have in the parentheses, the commas makes the I sound as in father. The commas makes the I sound as in father.
Dog.
Dog.
Now, I don't care if you see the two little dots in front of the commas, it's still gonna make the I sound.
Dog is fish.
Dog is fish. So everybody, everybody's looking at the commas right now. Um, let me show you something. You're looking at the commas, if I put a commas on it like this, that still makes the I sound. Can everybody see that different commas? Now, the reason, the whole reason for the niku do. Is because. When the Hebrews came out of the Persian captivity, and they were going to Israel to build the second temple. Of Joshua Ben Zerubel. They were speaking different languages, and so they had a group of priests called the Mazarites. Who took the languages of the region, and they had to create an, a system to teach the Hebrews how to speak Hebrew. And so because there was being different languages, some languages, it was very hard for them to learn Hebrew. And so they used the diacritical system as a way of teaching the vowels. So the reason for this, commas with the shiva in front of it, is to get you to stop, take a breath, and then say the A sound. And you'll, you'll hear this in languages like Spanish. Where people have, they struggle to say words that begin with the letter S. So they don't say spirit, they gotta say S spirit. They gotta say the E before the S, because they can't just go into the S. Their palate, or their tongue just gets caught up, if they can't, if they don't do it that way. So those different marks are, are for people of foreign languages, alright? So the commas always makes the I sound as in father. So this, like you said, was, watch how I write it. D. A, no, I'm sorry. Let me go back to he, the English, D, A. G. Now you notice I wrote it backwards. Actually, cause when you're, when you're transliterating, you have to transliterate from right to left, because Hebrew is written from right to left.
Excellent. Yeah.
Alright, so. What about this one?
Ra.
Rush.
Rush. R. A. S H, look how that's written. Look how it's written, the, the, the H is not right here, right? The H is on this side. This is, this is how I transliterate, I transliterate letter for letter. Now, in Hebrew, there is not a word for word translation. So. I am going to the store, is what, I am going to the store. That's six words in English, in Hebrew, that might just be two words. Right? Or three words, I need. Right, I'm going to the store. Right? So there is, so a lot of times, because we are so dependent on English, and because English is an inferior language. It takes all of these extra words to say the same thing that you're saying in fewer words in Hebrew. And because we're so dependent on English, we look for a word for word translation. And there is no such thing as a word for word translation. But when you are transliterating, I transliterate letter for letter, alright? I want you to make sure you understand the difference, there is no word for word translation. But you must transliterate letter for letter. Let's practice this. Um. Let's see who we have on the call. Let's go with Devora, Devora, what is this one here that I have highlighted?
Ra.
Ra, so that would be. It would look like that, Ra, alright? Um, Nala and Jerry, what about this one right here, what is this one? So that would be, yes, ha. Uh, Izria, what is this one? Um, Tina Rogers, what is this one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was on mute, shah.
Shah, now, now, watch how I write Shah. Uh oh. Shah. I know that looks strange, right? But we're going from right to left, but remember, it's a sheen, so there's the first letter, that's the sheen, and then here is the komas, right here. So that's how, that's how it would be, but that's not how it's gonna look on, on the thing, it's gonna look like this. Alright, um, Tina Rogers, what about this one here? So that letter looks like a mem, but it's not a mem, what else could it be? I think I heard you say it.
I said Deborah, ta.
Ta, okay, ta. Now, if, if that were a mem, for instance, let me, let me just, uh, go back to Hebrew, pull up my keyboard here. If that were a mem, it would look like this. I think mem is under here, there we go, this is mem. And I go to that, that would be mem or ma, right? That would be ma. Now, we have this one here, it's going to be, I heard somebody say it. Uh, let's make, let's go back to my, my English. I gotta, I gotta keep switching back and forth as best I can with these, uh, calculators, these typewriters, because they don't, they don't, I mean, they're making it as hard as possible to learn Hebrew.
Oh, you handling it, I'm amazed at what you're seeing.
And then we have, of course, we have da, well, I appreciate it. Alright? So, there we go with the, uh, the answers to those. Alright. Exercise number one. Transliterate, remember I told you transliteration is, is letter for letter? Transliterate these words using the transliteration key. I've done the first one for you. And we're gonna just do it in our brains, write it down on a sheet of paper. Alright, and, uh, I'll give you guys like two minutes to, to really think about them. It's seven oh five, come back at seven oh seven. I'm gonna scroll down to the last couple of them, okay?
Thank you.
Let me zoom out a little bit, maybe that'll work. There we go.
Yoke Na, I'm gonna step away for a few minutes, I just wanna call my mom and check on her real quick, I'll be right back.
Alright, Izria, go eat, go eat your pork sandwich without letting us see you on the screen.
I love that.
Just make sure your camera's off.
So she catches it from you and Gibor.
Alright, so we have here, we have the D, then we have the O, and then we have,
Reish.
Reish, there you go, door. Next, we have, the L. Right, we have the AH, or you could just say eh, it doesn't really matter, however you wanna do it. And then you have the G, log, right? Next, we have, there you go, the mem. Then we have the O. There you go, and then this is the nu. Remember, i- and it's supposed to be nu, so see, but we are not gonna try, try to choose anybody. The last one here is an actual word, right, this is,
Sa.
Eh.
Eh.
Ar.
Ar, sorry, right. And this is the masculine form of Sarah Samachia's name.
Is that minister, or what is?
Yes ma'am, it means minister.
Minister.
Yeah, that's the masculine form of Sarah's name. Or Sarah's title, I'll just say. Alright.
Get the picture of it.
Yes ma'am, you can.
You know.
Alright. I'm going to scroll down now, we're gonna try to put some of this together. These words are going to be actual Hebrew words. So let's look at the first three. And then we'll go to the next one, okay? We're still, we're, we're still putting saying this in, in our minds, and we're not saying it out loud. We wanna give everybody the benefit of struggling with it, okay?
Okay.
You can write it down on a sheet of paper, if you know the answer right now. So I'm gonna do the first one with you all, and we'll see what, uh, what we come with, okay? And this way you'll be able to see how the transliteration looks next to an actual word, alright? So, the first, the first letter of this first word is going to be what?
Mem. You call it na, so, okay.
That's ma'am, yes. And then, we have,
Oh.
Oh, now, what you're, what you'll notice above that vowel in the word, in, in this word, is you see that dot floating above the vowel? That dot is called the holam. That dot on the keyboard, it is the same exact dot that you put on the shin. But, whenever that dot appears above the vowel, it is the vowel, holam. Let me erase this real quick right here, I wanna write this word for you, so you guys can see it. It's called holam. See that?
Kane.
Sometimes, you'll just see the holam. Sometimes, you'll just see the vowel. When you see them together, it's called a holam vowel.
Oh, okay.
So you can see, you can see that sound any one of those three ways, it doesn't matter. You can see it as the devav, you can see it as just the holam, or you can see it as the holam vav, doesn't matter. So, we have the mem, we have the holam vav. What's next?
Race.
We have the reish.
Ah.
Ah, mhm, mora.
Mora, there you go. Mora. What is mora in Hebrew?
Teacher, female teacher.
Female teacher.
Nicky va. Nicky va.
Does anybody have any questions about the first one?
No, I love that, thank you.
Alright, let's go down to the second one. Give you guys like a one minute to, to, to struggle with it, and then we'll come together and, and answer it.
And I have a question after that, too.
Yes ma'am, uh, go ahead and answer your question.
Well, it's pertaining to this particular word that starts with the ta. I'll say the rest of the letters. O, or kolam vav, um, dalit, ah, and hey. How do they differentiate between the ta and the tet?
That comes from practice, and you're gonna struggle with it.
Okay. Just knowing the words.
Yeah, you just gotta memorize, you gotta memorize the words.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, when you, if you grew up in Israel, and you're in fourth grade, fifth grade, and you're learning how to read and write without the nikud, sometimes you write a word that starts with a T, and you use the tet when it's supposed to be the ta, or you use the ta when it's supposed to be a tet, and you get it spelled wrong. So you gotta just, I mean, I guess they do spelling tests, and they put a bunch of T words on there, and you gotta memorize which would be the way to spell it, you know, it's just memorization.
Hmm, toad. That's, that's good.
So, you know, you know, sometimes you want it to be some kind of fancy trick, sometimes it's just snatch the bandit off, you know? So we have the, the ta, then we have the O, the holam vav, we have the dalit with the ah, and then we have the hey, toad. Toad.
Toad.
And you can see how the transliteration looks. And, and so, for instance, there is a, there's a website I go to, hope you guys have seen my screen. There's a website I go to, and it's called Parallel Hebrew Old Testament. And I want you, I wanted you to see how they transliterate, if I go to this website. Genesis, chapter one, and verse one, look at this. There's the Hebrew, there's the paleo Hebrew, and look at the transliteration.
Wow.
Brashith, bura, alhim, et hasamaim, et ha'adis.
Yes.
You see that? So, how they transliterate is, is very similar to how I do it, e- except for them, all of the, uh, vowels are lowercase. And for me, they're not, I, I don't lowercase some of their, here, they're, they're uppercase unless they are a true vowel. But it's just, you can see how sometimes, the, uh, anywhere you go, right? You can see how some of the stuff, it looks like, it doesn't make any sense. But it's, because they've transliterated it letter for letter.
Okay.
Alright, let's go to number three.
Adol.
So I have a G. Then I have, uh, an A, da. And it, it could be an AH, if you wanna put an AH there, ga, right? Because sometimes, in English, you have long A sound, the ga, and you have a fat A, which is ga, alright? Ga and ga are different for us. Uh, ga, then you have the D, you have the holam vav, and then you have the lamav, gadol.
Mhm.
Eh.
I told you I'll be reading Hebrew at the beginning, at the end of the lesson. Here are the last two.
Da.
Hmm.
That's a, a ta, T, ta. That's a toad. Oh, you're saying, okay. You're right.
I, I'm gonna scroll a little bit, look at the difference. These two are different.
Ah, ha, ha, torah. Wow, that's reish.
Oh, that's reish, it sure is.
Torah. Yeah.
I, I showed you in the beginning, right, some letters in the light.
Torah.
That's right, so now we have here, we have the same thing almost, right? We have T, O. We have reish. Torah. Now, generally, when, when, when you have, like, it isn't a hey, I'm not gonna do this, right? You could do that, if you liked the komats at the end, right? But, you know, I don't do that, it's just too many, too many letters already. So I just, you let the hey be what it is. Alright? And, um, one of the things that you'll find is that, let me, let me, um, let me make a little, uh, interjection here. I'm gonna insert a row below, and I'm going to take this here, and I'm going to copy and paste it. Now, what I want you to see is that this might not be spelled correctly, right? And this here might actually be a patach, which is this. You see that? Under this reish, you have that patach. And that patach is an a sound as well. And you might say, well, how can you differentiate between the komats and the patach? You can't.
Okay.
If you're not confused, you're not doing it right, you know? So, I don't know if torah is spelled with the komats or the patach, but it doesn't matter, when you sound it out, they make the same sound.
Okay. And, and, uh, that kind of applies also for those vowels under the first letter. I, I, in my reading, I've, I've been trying to determine, do they start with one or the other? And then, like, if they start with the, the first ah you taught us, then each word after that, it would have the, I forgot what it's called, the short, uh, dash. But it doesn't matter, it's just,
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's all the same. So there, there we have the, uh, the vowels, right? The, the O, the holam vav, the vowel, and the, whatever you call it, right? They all look alike, too. You have the, uh, the holam, the holam vav, and then the vowel by itself, and they all make the O sound.
Okay.
So it just, it just depends on, see, so, one of, one of the things that I tell my students is, because you know how you learn, you kinda have to make your own T, and you gotta make your own supplemental A's to help you get the understanding you're trying to get. So if, i- if, if it does you, if it, if it does you a disservice to, to, you know, put an AH or OH or something like that, then just use O. This, you, you don't need to have an H right here if you don't wanna H right there, just make the holam vav and the vav a lowercase o, you know? Cause it, however, it, it, however it helps you to, to, to say the pronunciation correctly, is what, is what matters. Alright, so, so, let's, let's, let's prove this real quick, cause I have, this last one is designed to stump you. And I'm gonna, I think, I, I, you probably are looking at like, what in the world is this? So this is, oh, this was the one I added, I'm wanting to remove it real quick, okay? Let me remove this, delete row, now, look, look at this last one. This, so this last one is designed to trick you.
Okay.
Cause you remember I told you, the vowel, most instances, especially for this class, the vowel always makes the O sound. Most instances, especially for this class, the vav always makes the O sound.
In between two consonants.
In between two consonants, the vav makes an O sound. One of the things you'll learn in Hebrew is consonant, vowel, consonant. Alright? So here, let me make another row, let's put a row below. Alright, so here we have the dialect. Then we have the kamats. Then we have the vav. Then we have the yud.
David.
And then we have another consonant. Yeah, that's the V. Now watch this, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, right?
Okay.
Then we have underneath that, we're gonna put aleph, bet, gimel, dalek, k, vav. Right? Zine. Tet, no, is it chet? Let's put the chet in tet, then we have yud. Alright? So um uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So the yud is the tenth letter of the Hebrew alphabet, I put it all. The U is the tenth letter of the Hebrew alphabet and the J is the tenth letter of the English alphabet or the Latin alphabet. And we we know for, we know from our studies that before the the letter J was invented, the letter I had a consonant form and a vowel form. Okay, the letter I was both a consonant and a vowel. Right? And and what they did was, they were playing with it one day and they put a hook on it and it became the J. Now, but also, remember, the the tenth letter is yud, right? Of Hebrew is yud. So that J and that Y are interchangeable. That's why when you, when you say the word you don't say hallelujah, you say hallelujah. Alright, so all of this goes into play when we're looking at this word David. Okay? So you have consonant, vowel, the kamats, the vowel, consonant. And then you have a vowel right here, right? Let's uh, let me, let me put it in here so you, so you can see it written out. I'm gonna go um, let's let's do it like this, I don't wanna um I'm gonna copy this and paste it right there. Now watch this. So you have da. V, now, so for this E sound, this double E sound. You can see, sometimes you'll have it like this. You'll have a this is the chitic, this is the chitic right here. You have this little dot underneath. Right? So the same way, the same way you have the holam vav and you have the vav and you have the holam, you have this thing called the chitic yud, okay?
Yes.
Uh-oh, and I always do that, let me um I'm sorry, I know it's confusing sometimes, but let me jump back over here to English. Alright, chitic. Did everybody see that?
Yes.
The chitic. And you might have the yud. And then sometimes you have a chitic yud, okay? The same way you have the holam. The vav. And then you have the holam vav. I want this all on the same line, alright? So this here makes the double E sound. Alright, and this here makes the O sound. Alright, so you have the chitic, the chitic is this dot by itself. The chitic, the yud is this letter here by itself. And then the chitic yud will always be the chitic under the the letter before the yud. And you'll see this in a lot of different places in the scriptures, chitic yud, it is is very confusing. And um I wanna show you.
Nick can be.
Let's see, let's go to um Isaiah. Oh, wrong slide, right here. Let's go to Isaiah, chapter sixty. And see where we can find that, alright? I'm gonna copy this whole thing and I'm gonna put it in our chat here. Let's uh squeeze it in right here. Alright, so
cool me.
Right, so here we have
cool.
Me, yes.
Me.
And 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 there you have the chitic yud right there, see that chitic yud? The chitic is under the mil and the yud is by itself.
Key, awesome.
Alright. I wanna uh I wanna bring this down to a smaller font size so we it'll fit in there.
Okay.
So uh, and then we're gonna have to throw this on this side here. Alright, here we go. Cool. Me. Right, or maybe we could do it with a with a lowercase I, right? Can everybody see the cool? There's the K. There's the U, right? This is, this is another rule for the vav. Vav is gonna be the most versatile letter in all of the Hebrew language. Alright, it can make all kinds of sounds. Alright, cool me. There's the shitic yud making the E sound. Then we have a space. I have to move this over. Now, remember that the uh the the aleph is silent, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna skip the aleph. The aleph is silent. We're gonna go to the the holam vav, which is O.
O.
Right? And then we have, yeah, so I'm gonna put an H there, cause that just gives me the placeholder for the O, right? Then we have ori. Kumi ori.
Kumi ori.
Uh, I agree.
Yes.
That, that aleph and that vav, that's one of those blends. Like, whenever you see the aleph and the vav together, it makes the O sound. Like, um, like, it's the, it's actually a word, the word is O.
So I'm going to uh, I I didn't, I didn't include this, cause I didn't, I didn't wanna do overkill. But let me just show you what she's talking about really quickly before we get back. Cause I wanna make sure you are visualizing what she's putting out there. I'm just, I'm scrolling down, this is my Hebrew class, um, come on now. I got lots of hair, um. We're looking for this. Alright. Now, i- if this thing has the same thing. Okay, letter blends, there we go. I'm gonna say they have the same title as the other ones, because I haven't changed it yet. So look at this, aleph yud makes an E sound. I and vav makes an U sound, as in food. Aleph vav makes an O sound, as in over, as ori, right? And that's the last one, I think I have on there. So if if you wanna take a picture of that, I'll be sure to include it in the uh, in the kumi ori. I'm gonna go back to where we were. Alright, so again, we have cool. Me.
For me.
And ri. What do you think this one here says? What do you think that says?
Key, key.
There you go, uh-oh.
Swam.
Key. Key.
Eva.
Eva, exactly. Now, this under the the race, this thing under race is called a
seri.
Seri, and that's what that uh zari. And seri makes a EY or an AY sound.
Okay.
So so this is gonna be O re. There you go, the capital fee, orish. So I want it to be smaller, I mean, shrink it down, there you go. Kumi ori, kiva ori. Now, you you see how this here is? If you, if you, if your, if your mind isn't right, you're gonna say maybe O or K, right? You gotta remember that we're transliterating letter for letter. Okay, letter for letter. Alright, then we come here. So this, this here is representative of the word in English, and. And, A and D. And so this vav is not the same as this vav. They're different. Alright? This, this vav here, the blue vav, you see here, the blue vav is a vowel for u. Whereas the red vav is, is called a prenominal prefix. A prenominal prefix is a word that you attach onto a a another word to change the state of the word. Right? And in Hebrew, Hebrew is like other Afro-Asian languages because you have root words, which is called the construct, the con, the construct state, the root word. And on tax, attached to the root word, you have prenominal prefixes that go before the word, and you have prenominal suffixes which go on the back of a word.
Okay.
Alright? Now, but there is no quiz over this, okay, so don't, don't worry, we've been, we've been at that for almost two hours. There is no quiz. That the vav is very versatile. And it is the understanding of the vav in its different forms. Whether it's the vav, whether it's the holam vav, whether it is the and, like it is in the red, or whether it's one of those vowel forms, like it is in the blue. This is why, when I talk to Hebrews who think they know the Hebrew language and you start talking about construct state and prenominal prefixes and prenominal suffixes, and they'd be like, huh? You know? This is also, and I don't want more tangent, but this is also how you can prove that Hebrew and Yiddish are not the same language. Because even though Yiddish uses the Hebrew alphabet, Yiddish does not have the structure, like construct states, prenominal prefixes, prenominal suffixes. It doesn't have those things that make Hebrew an Afro-Asian language. And the proof is in looking at other Afro-Asian languages like Arabic or Swahili. My wife is from Kenya, she's fluent in Swahili. And Swahili has prenominal prefixes and prenominal suffixes as well. So because Yiddish does not have them, you can look at the structure of the language Yiddish and you'll find that it is a dramatic language, it's structured like English.
Okay.
I just, I'm just going up there, I know it went
Structured like it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so 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 what you're seeing here is, in the red and the blue, two different ways how versatile the vav is. Okay? So this is u. It's pronounced the same in the red and the blue, it's pronounced the same, but in the red, this is kind of vav, whatever the vav in this form appears at the beginning of a word, it always means and. Alright, it always means and. Alright, I'm gonna write that here. Whenever shuruk, that's what it's called, shuruk appears at the beginning of a word, it always means and. Now let me uh, let it just smaller so you can see it. Whenever shuruk appears at the beginning of a word, it always means and. Hey guys, I know we're, we're, we're almost, we're, we're an hour and forty minutes in. So we are, we're finished really with the lesson for today. I don't wanna go over too much more. I'm just giving you some real world examples. Um, so, cause I want you to go home with something to 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 look at. Uh, your homework assignment is going to be to practice reading Isaiah, chapter sixty, verse one.
Sixty or sixteen?
Am I writing right here? Isaiah, chapter sixty, and verse one.
This is a deer.
And we are going to uh, tomorrow, I'll do the same exact class tomorrow for those that uh missed it today. Uh, give you guys, give you, I keep saying guys, but it knows ladies, give you ladies uh to go on the highways and air streams and and start complimenting how much Hebrew you guys learned and 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 talk about how much everybody missed, so we can grow the class.
Not shame.
Yes.
Not shame, ladies, this is. Is ready to finish that sandwich, she's back.
And then it'll be in WhatsApp by this time tomorrow, or?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be the same, the same platform, everything.
Okay. And I I'm asking how soon? I'm not rushing you, but.
Yeah, no, tomorrow, wha- what time? Was it, did this time work for everybody?
The ones of us that read it, read the notification, um, but I don't know that everybody did, and that. Those who did, maybe they're still, they were still getting off work or just getting home from.
I can make it later, it doesn't matter to me.
You might wanna go up a half hour. Let's see, seven, eight, seven thirty maybe?
Sure.
I'll post it. I'll let you post. You decide what you wanna do. You're the mora, morey. Morey, you decide and post it, because I hope to join whatever time you select. Yes.
Gotta make it a little smaller. I'm just finishing this out, so that you all can see it.
Kovod, Yahweh. Zara. Kovod, so that's glory. Glory or honor?
Ori, kiva orre.
Okay.
Look, I'm alright on the second to last word. I would say.
Yeah, so it could be Allah as well. I I I I'm not gonna say my translation or my pronunciation is the best, I, uh. I just do what I can do, and, um, if 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 you read it to somebody else and they say, oh, you sound crazy. And you just say, that's what Yokebba says, so. I tell you, Israel, I'm three hundred pounds, anybody gonna fight me?
I'm through with it. She wanted to say that. She seen me doing Hebrew, so.
That's good.
And it it is the same word, kumii and kumal.
So kumal is a masculine rise, and kumii is, uh, I rise. Okay.
So one, one is, one is an instruction, you rise. And the other one is saying like, I will rise. I'm personalizing, I will rise. Kumal and kumii, and kum, and and what it means is, not 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 to rise, like to stand up, but to take action.
Moray Eliyahu, uh, brought that to our attention too, in one of our classes. The, the, um, raising of the ark.
Yeah, that's, that's numbers ten thirty-five. Um, what I can do is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, label this as lesson one. And maybe I can put a link to this, this, uh, this this document. In the, uh, in the, in the chat as well, that way, anybody who wants to go back through it can go back through it.
Okay.
As a transcript of the flow of the course.
Okay.
And I'll put all of this stuff in, uh, I'll put all of this stuff in, in in the chat, in the chat tonight. So you'll see, you'll see, you'll be able to see it. And like I say, if you get on the phone tonight or tomorrow, and you talk to somebody who wants to learn Hebrew, and they, uh. See my day with a one that comes to class, I'm gonna do the same exact class tomorrow night, and then every week we'll do. Uh, something different, uh, and it I'll make sure it complements what Sarah is doing. That way, it's not like two different curriculums. I'll use the same thing she's using.
Excellent session lesson and.
I'm gonna lower the arc, and then we can go ahead and and close out.
Hallelujah. Very good, Jonathan.
I must return.
Yes. I'm happy. Lahethra old.